Mr. Chair, recording has begun.
All right, sorry about that. So we'll call the meeting to order now at, it's still 6:00 PM. It is January 10th, 2024. Welcome to this public meeting of the Board of Appeals for the Town of La Plata. That is the call to orders. I guess at this time we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. Next, we will have the approval of the minutes, although I think we're supposed to review. Feel like I have conflicting scripts.
Mr. Chair, we would look for the approval of the minutes, the meeting on October 25th, 2023.
So at this time, have the, the board members had time to review the minutes from our previous board meeting. It was October 25th, 2023.
Motion to approve. Motion to approve.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The minutes from our previous meeting, October 25th, 2023, are approved. So at this point, we will begin our public hearing for case number B O A 000647-2023 Hartford Street Development. And I will ask Madam Secretary to review the public hearing procedures.
Certainly, Mr. Chair. Town La Plata Public Hearings are conducted in the following manner. A sign-in sheet is provided at the entry of council chambers for any public hearing attendees to register to speak, if they have not already done so in advance. Registration to speak will end when the public hearing is opened. The presiding officer will call registered speakers to the podium. Speakers who have registered to speak in advance via the town webpage will be recognized prior to speakers who register upon arrival at the public hearing. At the discretion of the presiding officer, speaker's comments may be limited to three minutes and may not be yielded. Written documents for the record submitted in advance of the public hearing are provided to the presiding officer prior to the opening of the public hearing.
Okay. And Madam Clerk, are there any, any potential speakers or witnesses signed in online?
No, Mr. Chair, there are none.
At this time, Madam Secretary, please review the public notices.
For the record, this public hearing was advertised in the Southern Maryland newspaper. And the December 22nd, 2023 issue is reflected on the certificate of publication attached to the meeting agenda. As indicated in the clerk's affidavit, letters were sent to owners of properties contiguous to and opposite the property by certified mail, and a sign was posted visible from Hartford Street and adjoining public right-of-way. Notice of this public hearing was also advertised on the town webpage.
And Director Harrington, we will move on now to the summary of the town staff report and recommendations.
All right. Thank you. Good evening. For the record, my name is Janine Harrington, Director of Planning for the Town of La Plata.
Ms. Harrington, before I forget, can I swear you in?
Yes.
Do you solemnly affirm or declare under the penalties of perjury that any testimony you give today will be the truth?
Yes. Okay, so for the project Hartford Street Development, for a special exception request, this is for a senior living community request in the R8 zone. And this is subject to Town Code Section 191-52.h.28 for a senior living community. The existing zoning is R8. The size of the property is 4.99 acres. It is currently undeveloped. And under the comprehensive plan, the parcel was designated as medium-density residential. So north is existing residential zoned R10, to the south is existing residential zoned R8 and R3. To the east is existing residential zoned R8, and to the west across the CSX railroad right-of-way is the proposed Pine Grove subdivision, which is a residential section zoned TDX. So the currently vacant property located at the intersection of Hartford Street and Kent Avenue, they are requesting the approval for the special exception use of a senior living community. On their plan, they are showing the proposal for 20 dwelling units. And now I will move into the criteria for approval and findings, since it kind of overlaps with my summary. So under Chapter 191-52 of the Town Code, the findings that the board must find with this special exception request, the Board of Appeals shall not grant any special exception unless it finds from the evidence record that, A, the proposed use does not violate or adversely affect the Town of La Plata Comprehensive Plan, this chapter, or any other applicable law. Per staff review, the proposed use does not violate or adversely affect anything in the surrounding area in accordance with the comprehensive plan. The property is zoned R8 and has a designation of medium-density residential, which is in compliance with the town's land use map. B, the tract shall be suitable for the development proposed. Suitability of the tract shall be determined by reference to the La Plata Comprehensive Plan, size, topography, and other physical features of the tract, accessibility of the tract to services and facilities required by the use, and any other information as reasonably deemed necessary. Per staff review, the tract has been found to be suitable for the proposed development by the Planning Commission. Proposed use meets all of the required dimensional standards of the zoning code. C, the proposed use will satisfy, satisfy all use standards for the use set forth in subsection H. Staff has determined that the proposed use satisfies all use standards as set forth in subsection H, and a breakdown is provided in a minute. D, the proposed use at the location selected will not adversely affect the health, safety of residents or workers in the area. Two, overburden existing and planned public facilities. Three, be detrimental to the use or development of adjacent properties or the neighborhood. Four, change the character of the neighborhood in which this use is proposed, considering services currently provided, population density, character, and number of similar uses. And five, constitute a nuisance because of noise, traffic number of people, or type of physical activity. Per the review, the proposed development will not negatively impact the health and safety of residents in the area due to the senior living use. The applicant has included a traffic impact analysis within the revised narrative included in the petition. The traffic impact study has shown that senior living housing produces less daily trips than the same number of single-family detached dwellings, which are permitted by right in the R8 zone. Therefore, it would prove that the proposed senior living community would not, use would not have a detrimental impact to the neighborhood. So now moving to Section 191-52.h., which are the actual special exception use standards. Senior living communities is permitted in the, by special exception in the several zones, including the R8 zone. Number one, each senior living community tract must have direct access to a collector, arterial, or primary local street. The proposed development will have access to a primary local street. All town streets are primary local streets. Two, each senior living community shall consist of a tract of not less than four acres of land under single ownership or unified control, or in the case, and this isn't applicable because of the CB zone. So staff has found that the tract of land contains 4.99 acres, which exceeds the minimum of four acres. Number three, frontage. The lot must have, have at least 100 feet of frontage on a street as listed in item one above. The proposed development will have at least 100 feet of frontage on Hartford Street. Number four, side and rear yard setbacks. All structures on the site which are adjacent to a residential use must be set back at least twice the minimum setback required in the zone or the height of the building, whichever is greater. The proposed development does meet all of those required side and rear yard setbacks. Number five, maximum overall density shall not exceed 15 dwelling units per acre within the senior living community. This facility, assisted facility, living facilities does not apply to the second part of that section. So staff has determined that the proposed development will not exceed the maximum density of 15 dwelling units per acre. The density proposed is four units per acre. Number six, there shall be no requirement for a mix of housing types within a senior living community. Each senior living community may have any combination of housing types, as long as all dimensional and density requirements are met. The applicant, the applicant is proposing townhome units, or what is referred to as attached dwellings in the zoning code, and is therefore in compliance with this section. Number seven, a building permit may not be issued for construction in a senior living community unless a declaration of covenants, conditions and restrictions containing provisions suitably similar and not inconsistent with paragraph five has first been prepared by the owner of the tract, approved by the town attorney, and then recorded by the owner among the land records of Charles County. The declaration of covenants will be required along with the final plat for the subdivision, and building permits are not issued until the final plat and declaration of covenants are recorded. Number eight, dimensional requirements. The requirements in Table 20 will apply to uses within a senior living community. So in the table, we go down to attached dwelling, which shows that the minimum lot has to be 1,400 square feet. Minimum lot width is 20 feet. Minimum front setback is 20 feet. Minimum side setback is eight. Minimum rear setback is 15 feet. Maximum height is 35. And the open space requirement for green space is 50%. There are also buffer yard requirements. In accordance with this section, they are required to provide an F buffer yard. So as staff has reviewed, all of the dimensional requirements have been met on the site, and they are proposing an F buffer yard around the entire outer perimeter of the development. Number 10 is all of the residency and occupancy restrictions. All of these are required as part of the deed for each lot in the development, and some of it will be included in the declaration of the covenants. So I do state that the residency and occupancy restriction will be included in deeds for each lot in the development. The Planning Commission issued a recommendation on July 5th of 2023, providing a unanimous recommendation to the Board of Appeals to allow, for approval, to allow for the construction of a senior living, living community as shown and detailed in the staff report and in the applicant's submission. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have of me before proceeding.
Thank you, Director Harrington. Any members of the board have a question for the director? Director Harrington, how, what is the, what is the actual depth of the buffer yard that will be around the, the property between the property and the previously existing developed properties?
Madam Director of Legislative Services, can you please pull up the site plan? It does show the buffer yard requirements on the site plan. I do not know that off the top of my head. There should be an exhibit showing the F buffer yard. Maybe down a page. So it should have dimensions on the plan. I can't see offhand, but it would, what is the bottom on the buffer yard exhibit? What is the bottom width? It's 20.
We'll get to you guys, don't worry.
But yes, per the, the site plan, as you can see in the buffer yard detail, it is a 20-foot F buffer yard.
The, okay, so in Table 20, on your report, it indicates the minimum setback runs 20 feet. Is that the same as the buffer?
No.
Okay. And of that.
The buffer yard is in excess of the setbacks.
Okay.
That's why the property lines are drawn from the buffer yard, not from the rear property line.
I understand. And the buffer, and the setbacks is the building itself from the edge?
Correct. So they do outline the building restriction lines, which are also known as setbacks on the site plan, showing that they are in compliance.
Good. I'm sorry, I had flagged in the requirements is that the buffer has to be twice the minimum. Let me see that.
That is the reference to the setback.
Yes, the setback has to be twice the minimum. Trying to find the piece of code that goes with it.
That would be under Section 191-52.h. h.28.a.4. Side and rear set, yard setbacks, all structures on the site which are adjacent to a residential use must be set back at least twice the minimum setback required in the zone or the height of the building, whichever is greater.
Okay. And that applies to accessory structures?
No.
All structure of the site which are adjacent to, okay, so anything on this site that is adjacent to another property with a residential use has to have twice the setback as usual? Is that what that means?
Or the height of the building, whichever is greater.
So it's either twice the minimum setback, or in this case, 35 feet.
Right.
Whichever is greater.
Right.
So if the setback is 20, that's not far enough.
Well, the buffer yard is 20, and then the building restriction line is from that.
Okay.
So that's what I'm saying, the, the 20-foot buffer yard is in excess of whatever the setbacks are shown on the site plan.
Okay, and in your opinion, they meet this requirement in, sorry, 191-52.h. 28a4?
Correct.
Okay. Now, this proposal was in front of the board earlier in 2023. Have they, is something, has anything changed in the site plan from last time?
So on the site plan, they did do, they updated some of the exhibits to show the, the lands, the, the buffer yard. I'm not sure, I don't think anything else had significantly changed on the site plan. They did update the narrative, which was the most important piece.
Okay.
Due to the traffic impact study and the, laying out the requirements.
So back to Table 20. You have this as attached dwellings, you say townhome. I'm looking at the site plan, and each one looks like a duplex. Would that not be a two-family dwelling requiring not less than 3,000 square feet per dwelling unit? Rather than in attached dwelling, which only requires 1,400 square feet per lot?
You are correct. I'm, I am mistaken on that.
And so these are two-family dwellings. Do they meet the requirement of 6,000 square feet per lot?
Yes.
3,000 square feet per dwelling?
Yes.
And don't.
My apologies.
You guys aren't under oath, so I'd appreciate it if you would keep this down, because everything is being recorded. 3,000 per dwelling unit, but it's 6,000.
Correct.
Total, because each building is two.
Yes, my apologies. I had, I had analyzed that previously, but for some reason I did the attached dwelling on this one when I updated it.
And so that means the minimum lot width has to be 30 feet per dwelling unit?
Correct.
And are they compliant with that?
Yes.
And the setback is the same?
Yes.
Side setback is the same?
And the green space is the only other difference. None is required.
Okay.
But they are providing open space in the center.
I don't have any additional questions for Director Harrington. Are there any questions based on my questions?
You already asked them all in.
Okay. Thank you, Director Harrington. I appreciate your testimony. And I guess I'll reserve you as a witness in case anything comes up later. Thank you. Next, we'll move on to applicant, petitioner, presentation, and testimony. You all can please come forward. Everybody who is going to testify, come on up. Have seat, your attorney. All right. So anybody who's going to testify, please stand and raise your right hand. I'm going to go from my left to my right, your right. I'm just going to ask you your name for the record and your position with the applicant.
Sue Davis. Owner and builder.
Edward Van Arsdale, engineer.
Okay. And sorry, now, now I need your hands up. Do all four of you solemnly swear or affirm under the penalties of perjury that any testimony you give this evening will be the truth? Thank you. You may proceed.
On behalf of the applicant, Hartford Street LLC, and as you've just heard from the serving in.
Thank you. So again, for the record, good evening, Sue, Sue Greer of the Law Offices of Sue A. Greer, PC, representing the applicant, Hartford Street LLC. And as they just took their oath, you heard that with me tonight is Sue Davis, Mike McCook, Lisa Davis Holmes of Hartford LLC, as well as Edward, Edward Van Arsdale of Arrow Consulting, Incorporated. I believe that this is my first time, not before a Board of Appeals, but before this particular Board of Appeals. So I hope you'll bear with me as I learn your processes. We are here tonight for a use determination. The proposal before the board is a request for a special exception to allow the development of the particular use identified as a senior living community for individuals 55 and older, consisting of 10 duplexes for 20, a total of 20 senior living dwelling units. And again, if you just bear with me, because I have not been before you, but I always like to sort of phrase the legal standards before I begin. And as I said, we are here tonight for a use determination. So the way that I like to explain it when I'm appearing before boards, when we talk about the various roles of the different boards, the town council, the planning commission, the Board of Appeals, they all play unique and distinct roles in the land use and regulation of the town. The town typically starts, as you know, with a comprehensive plan that I always call is the big picture. It has the broad scheme of what the town wants to see happen within the town. In this particular case, your comprehensive plan has a goal number 24 of providing diverse housing stock, and even pulls out the fact that it encourages providing diversity of housing stock for seniors and other diverse populations to include the disabled community. From there, the town enacts what we call zones, and you know this, so again, bear with me. Various zones, and it decides, hey, what uses would we like in each of these zones? And it then, within each zone, classifies the uses. So the easiest one, of course, are those uses that are not permitted. We don't want this particular use in this particular zone. The second use is a use that is permitted, what we call a use permitted by right. We want this use, no conditions attached. This use can locate within this zone. The third use is typically a conditional use. You don't see it, but it's a use that says, we want this use. It's permitted by right. But when you do this use, you have to meet ABC conditions of the use. And then there's the final use that comes before you, and that is the special exception. And what I always say is it's, it's like, if any of you have a child, or a niece, or a nephew, or that grew up with Harry Potter, I always analogize it to the great sorting hat on Harry Potter, where the legislature, which in this case is the town council, has sorted the uses out. And the last use is the use that comes before you as the Board of Appeals. And that's what we call the special exception, or another conditional use. And with respect to these uses, the law says that the town council, when they enacted the zoning code, said, presumptively, this use is compatible. There's a, it's a rebuttable presumption, but there's a presumption that this use is compatible and desirable, absent a showing that with respect to this particular use at this particular location in the zone, there are unique adverse impacts with, with respect to this particular use at this particular location. But absent that, there's a presumption that the use is compatible, and that if you meet the requirements, the use is approvable. In this case, we're talking about a senior living community on property that is zoned R8. And what's important about that is that the use that is allowed by right, the one that you never see, but the Planning Commission sees, and the Planning Department sees, is single-family dwellings. And as I think you heard from the testimony, and I want to, I want to put you all at ease. I'm not here to regurgitate all the testimony that you heard at the prior hearing. And I, and I'm not going to do that. I'm going to go right to the heart of what you asked us to come back, or ask the applicant to come back and talk to. But I think it's important when we do that to the test, to understand that the testimony you will hear is that the impacts, when it comes to the issues in particular, that the Board of Appeals asked to be looked at, are less impactful for a senior community versus the by-right, single-family dwellings. And while I was not present at that prior hearing, I did watch the tape. And I, the testimony that I heard, and the record will, I think, bear me out, is that by right, taking into account not based zoning, because if I did the calculation without taking anything to account, I think that there's a, a, a high, a higher number. But I think I heard Ms. Harrington, and, and I think I heard Mr. Van Arsdale testify that it was somewhere between 24 and 27 single-family by-right dwellings. And in this case, the applicant is proposing 20 senior community dwellings, which again, looking at the code, under the base zone, the applicant is proposing duplexes versus what they could have proposed, which is a multiplex, which would have allowed them, I think, 60 single, senior dwellings. So having said that, and hopefully set the stage as to what some of the testimony will be, it's my understanding that after the hearing on July 12th, 23, or at the hearing, the board asked the applicant to return and provide some additional information on the analysis of traffic impacts, and to provide some additional information on impacts to water and sewer. And that since that time, an updated application, as well as special exception site plan, were provided to the board. So just right now, for the record, if I could just verify that those materials were received by the board and are part, are now part of the record.
I believe they were. Madam Secretary, Madam Clerk, sorry. Did we move the previous application packet into the record at the hearing in July?
Did we move the packets, sir?
Did I, did I move the, the written documents into the record?
Yes.
I did. That's all that matters. So, and it was the, the board's understanding that it was a continuance for further evidence rather than a, a, a complete de novo hearing this time.
Correct. And I just want to verify that the updated package of materials have been received by the town, are before the board, and are officially now part of the record.
They will be at the, it's later on my agenda when I move all the written, but yes, we have.
Okay, thank you. So with that, I would like to ask just a few questions of Mr. Van Arsdale. And then, and then the question I have for you as the board, and this is where, if you would bear with me and help me out, is I'm not as familiar with your procedures. When I've appeared before, some boards, they like me to do a summing up after the board's questions. Other boards ask me to come back up and sum up after the public testimony. So if you would be so kind as to provide me with that guidance, I would be deeply appreciative.
Yeah, if you want to do a closing argument, that's fine.
So with that, I would just like to ask a couple of questions of Edward Van Arsdale.
Yes.
And Mr. Van Arsdale, it is my understanding that you're a licensed professional engineer with the state of Maryland. Is that correct?
That's correct.
You're a civil engineer who received your degree from Penn State. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And you have been a civil engineer for 20 years, practicing in the area of, of land use development, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And as demonstrated at the last hearing, you're familiar with. And as demonstrated at the last hearing, you're familiar with the property that is the subject of this application and the surrounding area, is that correct?
That is correct.
And at the request, or follow, at the request of the board, requesting additional information, it's my understanding that you performed a traffic analysis impact of the proposed use, and that your findings are contained within the updated materials, is that correct?
That is correct.
Could you just very briefly summarize the steps you took and your findings?
Sure. Our traffic, my traffic engineering staff came out and performed traffic counts during the day in the fall in order to capture as much normal traffic, you know, school traffic, things of that nature. With those counts, they went back and analyzed that based off of those numbers, as well as the existing traffic numbers that were provided to us by, by the town. And through that, they found that based off of this point, 24 units was what the counts were based off, because that's what the original plan was, that was first submitted, was done, was done for. But now that we have 20 units, it's going to be an even lesser impact. But it showed that with those numbers, there was no impact to the existing level of service. There was no adverse impact to any of the movements at any of the adjoining intersections. Therefore, adding these single, these units won't have an adverse impact on local traffic as it stands.
And you indicated that you did a traffic impact of 24 homes, as opposed to the 20 homes proposed, correct?
Correct.
So you took a very conservative route in your approach?
Yes.
And I believe in your analysis, in Appendix B, there's an Exhibit 1 that compares the impact of these units to the by-right use of single-family housing, is that correct?
That is correct.
And based on your analysis, are the senior living, and the number that you used for the the single family, was the same number that you used for the 24, the same number that you used for the single, the senior housing, correct?
Correct.
And based on your analysis, was the, the impact of the senior housing less or more than the impact of the single-family homes?
The impact, senior housing had less impact than standard, single-family housing.
And did you also then, following that, the board had requested some additional information on the impacts to water and sewer? Can you explain to the board the analysis that you undertook there?
Absolutely. At the end of that meeting, I had discussions with Director Harrington to get a baseline for what, what the available capacity was for the town for water and sewer. And those numbers that she provided me at the end of July was roughly 208,000 gallons per day of water was available for demand, and roughly 245,000 gallons per day of sewer demand was available. We did our computations based off of the 20 dwelling units. What is required is 250 gallons per day per dwelling unit. And there's no difference between single-family or senior living. A dwelling unit is a dwelling unit, no matter what is there. And so based off of that 250 gallon per day per dwelling unit for 20 units, it'd be about, it would be 5,000 gallons per day of sewer demand and water demand. And at the time that these numbers were provided by Director Harrington, there was certainly ample volume capacity available for the additions of these 20 units.
And so in your opinion, would there be any greater impact to the water and sewer infrastructure of the town than the impact of the by-right, single-family development?
No, it would have the same impact.
And as you proceed through the, as you proceed through, if the board were to grant the approval, which we are hopeful that they would, but if the board were to grant the special exception use, this project would also then need to proceed through a major site plan process, is that correct?
That is correct.
That would also examine impacts to infrastructure, is that correct?
That is correct.
And if you were to obtain major site plan approval, this matter would also then proceed to a building permit, correct?
Correct.
And that a building permit, and as well as a development services permit to develop the site, each of those also contain their own regulatory hurdles and hoops, ensuring that the project complies with town codes and regulations, as well as providing adequate infrastructure, is that correct?
That is correct.
In your opinion, will the approval of a single-family, the use of the single, of the, excuse me, the senior housing adversely impact the health, safety, public health, safety and welfare of the surrounding area?
No, not in my opinion.
Okay. And then I believe one of the questions I heard from the board to Ms. Harrington was a question as to what changes were made, other than addressing these issues? Were there any other changes to the updated materials provided by the applicant?
Yeah, the only thing that had changed, I mentioned before, is that from the original plan that was submitted in July, there were 24 dwelling units. And then based off of the revisions that came through from Planning Department, reductions were made, and now we're at 20 dwelling units on the current plan before you.
And I believe in the exhibits as well, the buffer, if I recall, the buffer was better shown, is that correct?
Correct.
And how was it shown?
Yes, in the plans that were submitted, the buffer yard was highlighted in a green strip, or showing around the perimeter of the property to show the 20-foot-wide buffer strip that was provided clearly for anyone to see, because the plan was rather busy, I will admit to that.
And I apologize, I don't have extra copies, but if you go through your materials, this is what it would, this is the exhibit that you would be looking for. So with that, and without giving my closing argument, in the event that the board has any questions for the applicant, we would entertain those questions.
Are there any, are any of the other three members of the applicant LLC planning on testifying tonight?
Not unless it's in response to questions from the board. And again, unless there's a specific area that you would like to hear, I think that the testimony at the prior hearing, I've listened to the tape now twice, I feel like I know it in my sleeve, maybe not, you still probably know it better than I do. But I felt that they had given very comprehensive testimony, as well as the fact that you have the staff report in, in the record as well.
Are there any members of the board who have questions for the applicant at this time?
Evening. First, I thank you. Nice job from a "we are" guy.
Yeah, thank you.
Quick question, can you give me a a quick rundown on what changed between the 24 to 20 on the property?
Lot, building sizes, we actually had their architect provide us with actual footprints of buildings, as opposed to the general blocks that were shown. So in order to meet the setbacks that were required, you know, we had to do a little bit of shifting, the additional by the request of the planning department, pulling the buffer yard out of the lot, making it not part of the actual developable lot. There were some setback issues that needed to be revised, so in order to make the buildings fit and conform to the, to the dimensional requirements, so.
So is that the, so the buffer in the setback was increased when you went down to 20, is that the whole, so you get to 6,000, as the chairman was asking then? With the 24, did you meet that same 6,000 or no?
Yes, we did.
You did?
Yes.
Okay. So I think we did discuss this last time, but I just want to be clear.
The entrance to the proposed development will be from Hartford Street through, what I think is identified as Lot 3, or Parcel 3 on, on the plat, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And there is, is there a house existing on that property currently?
There is not, no.
Okay. And so nothing will be raised for the entrance to the development?
No.
Okay. And the width of Parcel 3, am I, is that correct, what I'm saying, Parcel 3?
Yeah, is, yes, I believe that is parcel, the entrance.
And that is, what is the actual width on Hartford Street of that parcel?
It is 100 feet.
Exactly?
It, I'd have to look at the plan, but.
If I could, if I could ask Ms. Holmes, I believe that she has the answer to that question, Ms. Holmes?
Like 100.6 or something like that, but yes.
Okay. But the testimony today is that the frontage, which will be the main entrance to this development, meets the requirement
Yes.
of 100 feet?
Yes. Yes, there it is, on the screen, 100.28 feet.
100.28, alright, so you made it.
Yes.
And I'm sorry, I do have a wait, oh. It's happened before. Usually, I always blame my kids, that they must have gotten hold of my phone and turned it all silent, because I would never have been able to. But it happens, no problem. And I just want to clarify with Director Harrington, the, it is that the statute regarding the frontage of this development requires 100 feet plus, or is it greater than 100 feet of frontage?
It is exactly 100 feet of frontage.
100 feet or more of frontage?
Correct.
Okay.
It's a minimum of 100.
Minimum, okay. With regard to the water and sewer, was the, the 200,000, 200, actually 208,000 gallons per day, is that total that is already used by the town to your knowledge, or is that what was unused out of the town's current supply?
Based off of the information provided by Director Harrington, that is the amount that's available, so unused.
Okay, so essentially, I guess Director Harrington, we use more water than that in the town of La Plata, but that is what is at the time of application, available for new development?
Correct. So we have a water appropriation to the state of Maryland to pull water out of the Aquifer at 1.234 million gallons per day. So we constantly monitor our wells and production wells to see how much water we're using. The 250 gallons per day is a very general standard that is used to calculate the average home. However, most uses and most dwelling units are actually much less than 250 gallons per day. So that is something that we're looking at. You know, do we want to make that a little bit more accurate? But at the time being, we're using the 250 gallons per day, and that is something that we monitor along with the site plan development process, the subdivision development process. Obviously, we're not recording any final plats or approving any site plans if there is not water and sewer available.
And, and Mr. Chairman, if based on your question, would you be okay if I asked Ms. Davis a question? Okay, Ms. Davis, you understand that representing Hartford LLC, or Development LLC, representing the applicant, you understand that water and sewer allocations are awarded by the town farther along in the development process, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and so you understand that tonight, again, we're here for a use determination, that in the unlikely event, or if it were to occur, something was to unexpectedly occur, that when you went to, at the time, you went to obtain the approvals that coincide with those allocations, if the town did not have capacity, that you would not be able to move forward, you understand that?
Correct.
And you understand that that is the risk you undertake in going through the development process, correct?
Yes.
And so the, the total piece of property that we're talking about is Parcel 442, which is the large part, and Parcel 3, that is the frontage on Hartford Street. Is it the applicant's contention that there is no other way to access Parcel 442, other than through the proposed entryway through Parcel 3?
There is actually a right-of-way on Parcel 5 that was designated for that, but it's very close to the existing home. So it was important to us to be good neighbors, and to keep all of our, the entrance and exit in that one location.
And I believe there's a page in your exhibits that shows what it would look like if it went through Parcel 5, is that correct? The entrance, there's a
There may have been a, in an initial.
I forgot to, it's on page 53.
Yeah, there, there's actually something that, there's a a plat that shows that, so yes, but we opted not to go, not to go that route.
And there's no other way, correct, to access this property?
That's correct. Just that right-of-way and the lot.
And landlocked on the west by already developed residential properties, is that correct?
That's correct.
And same to the north?
Same to the north.
And to the east, it's the CSX railroad?
Correct.
Which maybe someday is going to be a rail trail.
That would be cool.
Okay. I also noticed I noticed in the site plan drawings that were submitted for today, an addition of a, a study of, I guess, fire engine access, accessibility to the, to the circle.
Correct.
Was that in addition to the traffic study that you did?
No, I believe that was provided as part of the original submittal, too, to prove that a fire vehicle could make make, could traversally propose traffic signal, or tra, traffic circle.
And on page 79. Is that it? 79 of the agenda packet, not the petitions exhibits, I'm sorry. Okay, so on this plat diagram of the parcels, I note within Parcel 42, and it says Lot 7, but is, what I've been referring to is Parcel 3, several large trees are identified by, I'm assuming their diameter.
Yes.
Yeah. Is this, are these, were these marked on here for any reason?
Just to note that those are larger trees that would be, that are found, as opposed to scrub trees or
Oh, is there, is there a plan to preserve any of these barge or trees that are, is that why they're marked?
Yes.
Yes. Those, we can't, that we can, obviously, those that cannot be due to, you know, providing infrastructure of the roadway will have to be done, but going to save as many as possible.
And Mr. Chairman, if I could, based on your question, Ms. Davis, I believe you testified at the last hearing your intent to try to preserve the natural features as much as possible, is that correct?
That's correct. We, it's, it was important to leave that green space and just enhance the green space with some, maybe some shrubs and and in, leave the buffer, even though we have to build a, construct a buffer that has to be fenced, but it was important to leave as much green space as we can in the rear of the properties as well.
So you're building, part of this process is to put a fence around the outside of the property?
Yes, your code requires that.
Yes, and the, what is the what is the fence going to look like?
A fence. No, it would not be a change, like, I mean, at this point, we don't, we haven't gotten to that.
If I may, the, the code requires, again, for the record, Janine Harrington, Director of Planning, for the, the town code requires an eight-foot-tall board-on-board fence. So that could be either wood, or in most cases, we are seeing applicants using vinyl that is easier to clean and maintain. So again, that would be a requirement of the code.
And the code that requires that is around senior developments, or around all developments, what is the specifics there?
Is a requirement of the F buffer yard at the 20-foot interval. So there's that detail, which is under Section 191-48 or 49, I believe, the town code's landscaping and buffer yards. And there are different buffer yard requirements. The special exception requires an F buffer yard specifically for senior living communities. And since they are choosing to do the 20-foot buffer, that requires an eight-foot-tall board-on-board fence.
And that will go all the way down around the entire property, including what I've been referring to as Parcel 3 down to Hartford Street?
Correct.
Correct.
Anybody have any other questions? Any other members of the board have any questions, any?
Good from last time.
Based on our questions, is there any further testimony?
I I will clarify, I noticed you just said down to Hartford Street, that would not be, there would not be an eight-foot-tall board-on-board fence going down the parcel three. It's only where the F buffer yard is located.
And so on, um, looking at page eighty of the um agenda packet, which indicates that, you know, the green strip for the buffer yard, that part to the left, to the west of the entry road.
Oh, I see there, yes.
That is not technically the F buffer, but they are leaving that as if it was, or what is the plan for that?
Ms. Davis, if I could ask you, based on your question, Mr. Chairman, um, the entrance road, can you um, I I know that the more detailed drawings come later in the development process, but if you could, for the board, um elaborate on your intent with respect to landscaping along that entrance road?
Yes, it's our intent to landscape, and if not a hard buffer, like a fence, there will be landscape buffer to protect the privacy of the adjacent yards.
Any other members of the board have any questions?
No, good.
Um, Ms. Greer, if you'd like to proceed to your closing.
Thank you so much. Um, first, I do want to thank you for indulging us um this evening and indulging my first appearance, as well as I would like to thank your staff. They are always very professional and cooperative. That doesn't mean that they're necessarily easy, they're very robust in protecting the interest of the town and making sure that we dot our i's, cross our t's, and meet the requirements of the code, which is as they should, so they are very good public stewards for the town. Uh, as the staff report indicates, however, we, the, the special exception, and as the testimony indicates, both at the last hearing and tonight, the special exception request meets all of the codified requirements within the town's um code. I would also note that we received, and I know that this is not determinative, but I hope you do take it into account, the application received a unanimous recommendation from the Planning Commission. Further, it is in uh completely consistent with the town's comprehensive plan, which again calls for diversity of housing, and in goal number twenty-four specifically calls out diversity of housing to include housing for the senior population. The testimony before, and and I just want to back up for a second, because I think the question is not whether this property will be developed, but how this property will be developed. And so the property can be developed by right as a single-family community. And again, could be developed, be, the testimony is for twenty-four to twenty-seven single-family dwelling units. And the, and versus uh the twenty units that the applicant is proposing for senior housing. The, the importance of that is that all of the testimony, and there is no testimony before the board to refute it, is that all of the testimony supports that the impacts of the senior community are less than the impacts would be to have single-family dwellings um at that particular location. And I want to call out to the board that you have a very responsible developer before you. The testimony at the last hearing brought out the fact that the applicant has prior experience with development within the town to include Hickory Ridge and to include a senior community um just not, not far from this location, which is Washington Square. And you all live in the town, you're familiar with the town, you know that those are quality developments. The other thing I think it's important, and how the applicant demonstrates their responsibility, is the applicant did not come in to this property and say, and and I've seen it, and I know you all have seen it as board members, they didn't come in and say, how do I maximize my yield? I'm going to take every regulation, I'm going to construe it in my favor, I'm going to maximize my yield, and I'm going to put a multi, multiplex or an apartment complex there, and get my full sixty um units that I could get under the base zoning, which I think is fifteen units per acre, if I'm correct. Instead, what the applicant did is it did what it's done in its other development, it looked at the community, and this goes to compatibility compatibility with the surrounding neighborhood. It looked at the community, it looked at the existing single-family dwellings. It looked at the multifamily dwellings at the end, at the beginning, when you turn on to Hartford Street. And it said, let me put in a product that is more compatible and consistent and fits into this community. And that's why the applicant is before you with duplexes and not a different product. And then the applicant didn't put in as many as it could. It put in a a number less than allowed in order to uh make a quality product. So with that, in summing up, it meets all of the requirements uh set forth in the county or self, excuse me, in the town code. It's consistent with your comp plan, it's compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. I did listen, and I want to tell you, I always respect the testimony of the public, I think it's important. Um, I've been on both sides, I've represented government, I've represented private applicants, I believe a public process is important and robust, and we respect the concerns that the neighbors have. You can hear the responses from the applicant to address those. But I would like to say for the record that the, the, while I understand their concerns, the concerns raised by the neighbors are no different or no more impactful than the single fam, than the concerns they would have if a single-family development were going on this property. So we're pleased to present a senior product that will be less impactful to those neighbors. And again, we have a unanimous recommendation from the Planning Commission and a positive staff report based on all of the testimony before you, and I, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to remind you to please admit our written, updated written materials. We would respectfully request the board approve this uh use approval for the senior community. And I thank you uh for being gracious with me tonight and patient.
Thank you.
And it, at this time, I will enter any written documents into the record. Um, Madam Clerk, did we receive any public comment, electoral, in in written or electronic form?
No, Mr. Chair, we have not.
Um, do we have anyone signed up to make a public comment?
No, Mr. Chair, we did not.
Okay, um, are there any additional, final questions from any members of the board?
No.
Okay, um, is there any uh thoughts for a motion for a closed hearing?
No.
None from the chair either. Um, and so we'll move on to the deliberations. I think that it's clear from everything and Ms. Greer and the applicants, and I think this is clear last time as well, that the, the property is going to be developed, um, and that is the uh prerogative of the owners of the property. Our job as the Board of Appeals is whether or not to grant the special exception for the development to be a senior living commi, community. Um, at this point, it's twenty units. And we can see the uh, the, the plans um so far, that obviously have to go through the Planning Commission and um get building permits and et cetera. Um, I will note for the record that one of the reasons why I moved to postpone and continue the hearing to today from last July was because of the concerns of the public. Um, a few members, uh, a few neighbors of this property were here at the last hearing. Um, and it appeared that um notice had not been properly given um by the town to everyone in the surrounding properties, um based on the um the fact that there had been returned mail and that folks are out of town or something like, you know, it was, it was over holiday weekend and not enough time was given. Um, there were members of the community who were here at this hearing, at the, at this um hearing room back in July, who could convey to their neighbors um what happened, and I'll note for the record that no one has signed up to speak um today from the um, from the general public. Um, so at this point, um, it is, and as far as the record is today, uncontroverted that the um, I find, I've been, I asked my fellow board members to find with me that, based on the evidence and the record, um, the proposed development will not cause a traffic nuisance. Um, that there is adequate water and sewer. Um, does anybody have any thoughts on that?
Uh, no, but I do want to thank you for taking that extra initiative, decreasing the number from twenty-four to twenty. That's, that's a special thing, and you should be very proud of yourselves for, you know, trying to make something really quality build instead of just trying to jam it all in there, thank you.
Okay, so with regard to um the approval, my proposal is that we approve this, the uh application for special exception. Um, I am, you know, looking at um section one ninety-one dash fifty-two G two, Board of Appeals may impose other requirements not specifically listed in this article to ensure the health, safety, and welfare of all persons within a town of La Plata. Um, I think that this, um, the proposal that we have here obviously is not the, necessarily the final plan. Um, and it must go through um further processes before uh they break ground on this. Uh, the um condition that I propose, we put on the approval, is that in the, and if it's feasible, in the F buffer around the property, that uh except for installing the privacy fence um around the property, that uh the rest of the F buffer is left as is without being cleared. Um, and then, in addition to that, the noted large trees that are marked in the center of the, uh, which will be the, I guess, public green space um be uh retained. Um, and in addition, no, no changes to the layout here, I, you know, basically what I want to say is that the central green space remain a central green space in the final product. Um, does anybody have any comment on my proposed condition?
Um, repeat the first part again?
Sure, so the, the F buffer has to, they have to make a buffer yard with a fence around it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, one way to do that would be to, I'm not saying that the applicant is going to do this, but one way to do that is to clearcut the entire lot, put up the fence, and then reseed it and plant in that buffer. So they can't build anything in that buffer, but they don't have to leave it as is. My proposal, which I, and this is, I think, would um hopefully help appease the concerns of the neighbors, is to not cut anything other than what you need to put the fence in. Um, that's, that's my proposal for um the condition, as well as to keep the central green space as green space, because I know that plans can change um as we go forward. Um. Does that make sense?
It, it makes sense, the only, I guess with that thought, the only question I have is for that central green area then, um, are we, is there anything being um thought of to be put there, like a gazebo or anything like that, that's going to interfere or enhance the central area, because then you're going to have a problem with not cutting down, so.
My, so I'm sorry, let me clarify, the, the not, the, the not cutting would be just in the F buffer around the outside, and the plan to keep the central circle as a green common space.
Okay.
Means they could put things there, but not another, I mean, at this point, we're where we are, but that they wouldn't decide, oh no, what we're going to do is put another building in there, another residential unit, but they'll keep that as a, so it's two separate proposals, I guess I should say, one, um, so um, uh, I'll do these as separate motions. Um, um, before we do a motion to approve, one, I propose, uh, I move that the um special exception be granted with the condition that um the pre-existing woods and other uh, well, just that nothing in the F buffer other than for installing the required fence um be removed and be left as is. Um, does anybody want a second?
Second.
Hey, um, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. And second, um, uh, move that the plan as is, that it includes a central um, and uh open green space, um, that be required to be retained in the final plan um when it's presented for um a building permit. Anybody want to second that for me?
Well, as feasible.
Well, right, I just, I'm not saying that they can't cut in there, I'm saying that that stays as a central green space for the.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, alright, so then, at this time, um, I would move to approve the applicant's petition for special exception with those two conditions. Um, is there any further discussion?
No.
Okay, um, can I have a second?
Second.
Alright, um, all in favor of um moving forward with the approval um of the application with those two um conditions? Say aye, aye, there we go. And at this time, that would conclude our public hearing. Um, for this matter, it is seven oh six P M.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.